Study session on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one is called to order. You do roll call, please.
Yes, I will. Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez. Didn't see him. Well, I'll move on. Mayor Dorsey, are you here for your very last?
I'm here. I am here.
Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Inesco.
Here.
Councilmember Bowe.
Here.
There you are. But it looks like we have everyone except Councilmember Gutierrez, so I will mute myself and give him a call.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, our only study item this evening is the new city logo. Communication Specialist Mary Ricker has the details for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Mary Ricker. I'm the Communication Specialist for the city, and tonight I have some information to share with you about the process of selecting a new-
I just talked to Councilmember Gutierrez, Mr. Mayor. He's having a little trouble logging in. Uh, so I'm going to work with Donna real quick to see if we can get him, uh, set up.
Should we continue or?
Yeah. Did you want me to wait? Oh. Okay. Mr. Mayor, should I continue or should I wait first?
Well, you, I guess we ought to give him a minute or two. This is a part meeting. I can tell that already, so. Uh, let's give him a couple minutes.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
Okay, Donna's gonna work with him to get him, uh, get him set up and, and on, uh, on the meeting with us.
Can we hold up a couple minutes or?
Um, yeah, if you could, uh, give maybe two or three minutes and we'll see if we can straighten out.
I guess while we're waiting.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank every one of you guys for this. Can you see? Can you see? Yeah, this is, uh-
Censored.
It wasn't necessary, but I really appreciate it. I really do.
We appreciate you.
I promised tonight. Does anybody know what this is? This is my crying towel. I promise I'm not gonna use it tonight.
That's funny.
I'm sorry, I got a little emotional, but.
No, no, sorry.
And Mr. Mayor Donna is, uh, working with Councilmember Gutierrez right now, uh, to get him, uh, logged into the meeting. For some reason, the link is not working for him, so he should be here momentarily, but, uh, I think we can go ahead and get started with the presentation.
Okay.
Uh, hopefully Councilmember Gutierrez can join us momentarily.
Yeah, and if he has any questions, I can always go back or talk about whatever his questions about, so.
Okay, Mary, the floor is yours.
Awesome. So, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Mary Ricker. I'm the Communication Specialist for the city, and tonight I have some more information to share with you all about the process of selecting a new City of Shelton logo, so I'm going to share my screen really fast. Cool. Awesome. Okay, so. A brief overview of the process so far. We've been working with J-Ray, who is a design firm that specializes in government rebranding and new logos, um, throughout this entire process, and they've been really helpful. And you all remember, um, on October twenty-sixth, at that study session, we presented several different logo options to you all, and we selected sort of three finalists for public voting, which opened on November third through our Open Town Hall platform. And we asked for people to rank the three options from their first priority or their most preferred option to their third priority or their least preferred option, and that voting closed on December eighth, so just a few days ago. And obviously with this process of having the survey outreach was really key for us, and so I have some statistics here for you all. Um, with communications for the City of Shelton, social media is really big for us. It's a really effective way for us to reach our community, and we do that primarily through Facebook and Twitter. So on Facebook, our posts sharing the link to vote and information about the different logo options had an approximate total reach of a little over fifty-five hundred, which is really good for us. And in case you're wondering, Facebook reach is a metric that Facebook uses to track the number of unique users who see your post regardless of whether they've engaged with it. So that's just a little internal metric that they use. And on Twitter, we had an engagement rate of twenty-five percent, which is really good for us. Um, in addition to social media, we also created a page, um, in the news center of the city website um, with information about the logo options, and we also embedded the Open Town Hall link directly within that page to kind of make it a one-stop-shop for people who might not feel comfortable navigating between all of the social media and Open Town Hall, kind of making it really easy. And we were able to see that that page had two-hundred-and-forty-six unique page views during the voting period, which again is really good for a city webpage. And of course, uh, very effective ways to spread the word through our community partners like the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Council of Mason County, as well as media like KMS and the Mason County Journal and the Mason Web TV. And these images on the side, you're probably wondering what those are. Uh, that top square, kind of the white and blue alternating comments, those are through Open Town Hall. And Open Town Hall will prompt users to give feedback about their experience using the platform, and they will also give the date that that was submitted. So since this was the only survey going on, we know that this is for this survey, and so people liked that relatively accessible and intuitive use, uh, really liked that we were using a ranked poll option, liked it because they're not always able to attend these things in person, and very smooth, didn't have the outdated feeling of most government websites. That was really good feedback for us to have about the platform as a whole. And then those images below are obviously Facebook comments, um, that we received throughout the process. Um, we got a lot of engagement about the different options, which is really good. People had strong feelings about their preferences and the order of their preferences, which is of course what we are always looking for with something like this. And, um, so this is just kind of a spattering of the comments that we received through the city Facebook. Okay, so now really getting into the results themselves. So like I said earlier, our survey was open from November third through December eighth, so I believe that's about like five or six weeks, so a long, uh, survey time. And in total, we received six-hundred-and-twenty-six responses, which I'm really pleased with, and a cool feature that Open Town Hall offers is they'll tell you the equivalent hours of public comment that that would be. And so that's about thirty-one hours of public comment at three minutes per response, so. And those numbers underneath about the registered and unregistered responses, that is probably me getting really kiki about the analytics of this stuff, but, um, through Open Town Hall, you can make it required that people give their email address and sort of sign up and register with the platform, or you can have it so that you can vote without giving your email address. In this case, we made it optional, but we didn't really say anything about like, oh, here's the difference between these two. So this is sort of the natural inclination of people, whether they wanted to give their contact info or not. So this is something just really interesting for us to track as we use the Open Town Hall platform more, because if you do give your email address, you are also notified when we post a new survey. So kind of encouraging that continued community engagement, which is really key. And then on the bottom here, in case, you know, you need a refresher, are our three finalist options, and then that bold text underneath each of them is sort of what they were referred to in the survey and kind of in the written communications about the survey. So we have the blue heron all the way on the left, and in the middle, kind of the tree and mountains option, and then all the way on the right is the two-person saw. So now getting into the results. So obviously, like I said, the results, we did a ranked poll, so something to keep in mind when we're looking at these is that each of the rankings, first and second and third, each has a sort of weight to it rather than just having people pick their favorites. So that's just something to keep in mind as we look at the results. So here are the first priority results. So this is kind of people's most preferred of the three options. And you can see that the two-person saw received about forty-four percent of people's first ranking, followed by the tree and mountains at about forty percent, and then the blue heron at about sixteen percent. So we have our initial sort of most preferred option, but then we move into our second priority. So this is people's sort of middle option, and we can see that the numbers really shift. So the tree and mountains option has about forty-five percent, and then the two-person saw has about twenty-nine or thirty percent, and then followed by the blue heron at about twenty-seven percent. And so again, because this is weighted, then we have our third priority option here. Um, again, uh, numbers shift. The blue heron has about sixty, fifty-seven percent, um, of respondents ranked the blue heron third, and then the two-person saw about twenty-six percent, and the tree and mountains about sixteen and a half percent. So really interesting data coming from using this sort of ranked poll option. And so finally, sort of, there's been a lot of questions about this process, um, and what comes next. So hopefully this evening, after, you know, looking at the state of this helps, we'll be able to sort of select a new city logo. That is the goal. And our, you know, city staff, myself, Jeff, we will continue to work with J-Ray to sort of finalize the selected logo, whatever that may be, and to do things like get color codes to make sure the shades all match, social media graphics, and things like that. Um, with the implementation process, one of the first places where you'll see the new logo once selected and finalized would be the new city website, which that will launch early twenty-twenty-two, which is really only in a few weeks, which is really kind of wild. And, um, you might remember from our previous presentation that we talked about the sort of implementation list of all of the places that the logo would need to be updated throughout the city. So that will become really important throughout this process, and I can imagine that we will use it heavily to sort of determine the priorities, and it will take a while to go through that whole list. Um, but that's sort of the next steps going beyond. But that's all the info I have, and myself and Jeff are here to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, anybody have a question for Mary? Or a comment?
And if Councilmember Gutierrez is here, I'm happy to go back also, because I know he hasn't seen any of this before, so.
Councilmember Gutierrez, um, has a question?
You're, uh, you're muted, Councilmember.
Mute, okay. Is that better?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, as far as branding and marketing, I mean, some of these are really slick. What if we put them on sweatshirts and sold them? Can we market that? Can we like license them? Um, or have a third-party license them? Um, anyway, because I think, you know, I think there are opportunities here. I don't know, are they just gonna be on our logos or the, I mean, on their, our vehicles and, and the, the website? Or are there bigger things? Do you have a plan for, um, this logo?
Sure. That's a really good question, and I think for right now, we had just been talking about kind of existing city applications of the logo, but if there is some, there is a market for sweatshirts, I'm happy to do some research and see if other cities have done things like that, but I'm not sure if they have, so.
And one more question. What happens to the old logo?
So the old logo, so the old logo will very slowly be switched over to the new logo. So for a number of years, you might see both logos, because things like our social media profile pictures are a lot easier to switch than like vehicle decals, where those things have to be ordered and installed and things like that. But eventually, I know I've seen other cities say that it takes honestly about three to five years to really switch the majority of things over, so we'll see if that's the case for us as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The other, the other thing, uh, we really want to do is with the new logo is incorporate that into our street signs, so we really create a sense of place, uh, surrounding our, our chosen brand. Uh, so that would be one of the first, uh, major purchases that we would make to incorporate the new branding element into, uh, the placemaking for the City of Shelton.
Thanks, Jeff.
Deidra?
Yeah, hi, Mary. Um, I had a question about the feedback we received from respondents. So of the six-hundred-and-twenty-six responses that we got, how many of those were positive? Because I know we didn't give an option. People say, I don't like any of these. So do we see a huge falloff rate when people hit the voting? And from the feedback we got on social media or other means, what was that, um, positive or negative response we saw from the community?
So I think, I, you cut out a little bit with your first question, but I, you were saying out of the total responses, were any of them negative? So I can imagine that there were people out there who maybe didn't vote because they didn't like any of them, but that was, that, that is a hard metric to track, because I, I don't, I don't know of a way to track that, but I, I can imagine that that sentiment does exist. Um, I would say, social media-wise, I was really surprised by the number of positive comments and the number of people wanting to participate, like wanting to vote, you know, or just needing clarification to go to the Open Town Hall page and not to vote within the Facebook comments. But if you take that as positive feedback, which I do, because I take any participation as positive, um, I was really surprised by how positive it was. But yeah, tracking the number of people who maybe were going to vote and then didn't, I'm not sure of a way to do that, but that would be an interesting thing to track, if there is a way to track it.
I just think that for this and other projects, it would be interesting to make sure we have some mechanism in place to kind of track sentiment, because I know a lot of times, and there's not an answer there that you gravitate toward. It's really easy for you to come out and done here. Uh, and so if we're really trying to get an accurate feeling of, of how, where the community is at, I think that's gonna be important for future, um, voting and such, and then just thank you, Mary, because I saw a lot of redirecting people who were making comments. Great feedback. We love when you vote. Here's the link. So I know you did some, um, real nudging in that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, sometimes putting the link as, in as many places as possible.
Okay, Eric?
I just wanted to say I, I still love the two-person saw. I'm not real keen about the dark green color. Um, I was hoping the council would want to discuss that, and for the feedback, uh, maybe next time we do a survey, we can do none of the above as an option. That's it.
Yeah, that would be a possibility.
I did suggest that at the last meeting, but that feedback was not incorporated, and that's fine. But I, I do think it's something we need to consider when we're trying to get an accurate, um, depiction.
Mr. Bowe? James, can you hear me?
Looks like he froze up.
Oh, okay. All right, anybody else right now? We'll come back to him in a minute. All right. I don't see anyone else. Well, let's try Jim.
Mary is.
Mary is.
I hit up, I was out of Zoom for a minute. Um, yeah, I, I had a couple of people say the same thing about they wish that they could have a not vote, because they didn't like any of them, so they didn't vote. And I, I had a couple of people also wonder why we didn't put it out to the community for, uh, for like local artists and things to actually give feedback and logos from our community, not just some kind of very templated logos. I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a huge fan of those logos. They look like the ones that I see on Fiverr, uh, for five dollars, where you can get like people from India to build your logos for, for cheap, but that's just my feedback, but it, it doesn't make or break our city with the logo.
All right. Anyone else? I'm gonna look at here one more time. All right, I see no one else. All right, well, I'd just like to, uh, thank Mary for all her work on this and the rest of the staff that might have worked on it. Um, it takes a lot of her time, so. All right. Anything else, guys?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think what, uh, what, uh, the team here is looking for is direction from council on, uh, is there a preferred one or should we go back to the drawing board?
Oh, okay.
We're, uh, we're open to that, um, open to redesigning the survey. However, uh, uh, council thinks that it'd be best to incorporate, uh, community feedback. I will say that, um, having a professional design firm, uh, who, this is what they do for a living, is, uh, the preferred method and the way we will do it the second time, if we do do it a second time. Uh, so, uh, with that caveat, we'd be happy to go back and talk to J-Ray again and, uh, start fresh.
Well, I would say, uh, for myself, out of these three choices, um, I still lean toward the one with the saw, because we're still, you know, we're still a logging community. We still have a pretty large mill down there at the end of town, and, um, so that, that would be my vote out of those three, if, if it came to a vote, which for me, it probably isn't gonna come to a vote for me, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's my two cents worth. Kathy McDowell?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. First, I have a question. Why, and maybe I shouldn't ask this question, but I'm going to anyway. Why did we go from the logo we have now to a different one?
So, uh, if council, uh, some council remembers in twenty-eighteen, uh, the city hired a firm called, uh, TIP Strategies, and one of the major elements of their, uh, economic development strategy, and that's what the, the firm was hired, uh, to do, was to design an economic development strategy. One of the, uh, the major emphasis points was a rebranding campaign. Uh, and we are, um, working on doing the rebranding, uh, to implement elements of that, uh, that TIP Strategies studied at the council commission back in eighteen.
Well, I was there, so, and two thousand and eighteen is a few years back, so they probably forgot it about that. The second part is I like the mountains, but I think they need to look more like mountains.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they need to be taller, and maybe even with the old Mount Washington face on it. I don't know if you can do that. When you look at the Olympics, on a clear day, you see Mount Washington. It looks like, you know, George Washington's side view. I don't know if that could be put on there, but I do think the mountains need to be taller.
All right, Mr. Bowe?
Yeah, I, I would follow up on what Kathy was saying. I think that if, I, I, if I had to choose one of the three, it would be the one with mountains, but I don't know why they don't represent the mountains that we actually have here. You know, because they, they just look like kind of hills or world-scriggly lines. My, my vote would be to go back to the drawing board. I, I don't think we have a home run winner there. I mean, they're, they're not, they're not great logos to me, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
Anyone else have a comment?
We haven't heard anything from Councilmember Schmidt.
I'm good.
If I can talk you out, Joe.
No, I'm good. I just, uh, you know, I guess I interpret branding and marketing a little bit differently than the way, the way the rest are. I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to going back to the drawing board, but there's usually a reason why we're branding and marketing or rebranding and marketing, and we're turning a page and history, and we're moving on to other things, and, you know, yeah, we have a mill in town, but that is not our single source of economic development in Shelton. Uh, you know, and, yeah, I'm, I'm very proud of Sierra Pacific and what they do and contribute to the community. It's not a knock. It's just, you know, the days of a timber town and what that means. Are we turning a page or not? And if the consensus of the group, I'm not the creative mind. I'm just looking at this through the lens that I have, and, you know, if, if we're, uh, gonna rebrand the city, then well, let's rebrand the city. If, if we want to continue to kind of keep things going the way that we're going, then, um, then yeah, I mean, then let's go back to the drawing board and take a look at it. But, um, all three of them graphically to me look great. I'm not, again, I'm not a, not an artist. Um, that's why, you know, we hire a professional to do this. Um, you know, and I don't really have much more to really add into that, but it's just, uh, you know, it's, if, if, if the council, you know, going back to TIP Strategies and Downtown Visioning Plan, and, uh, you know, Economic Development Strategic Plan and what all that meant, um, you know, if you re, reread through that, you know, there are, there are components of it that, that talk about, uh, you know, um, the reasons why we want to do this in, in, you know, this five-year, uh, process, and there's this implementation matrix, and, you know, are we, are we capturing what, uh, what that means to coordinate a consistent unified brand, a marketing theme, and a campaign that coordinates with the messaging in the EDC and the Chamber of Commerce, the downtown associations and community events committees? I mean, you know, are we hitting that mark? I don't know. Um, versus just pick the prettiest picture. I don't know. Uh, but I'm, I'm okay with, uh, going back to the drawing board, and I'm okay with the crosscut saw. I'm okay with the mountains. Uh, I think all of it looks professional. Uh, it, it looks modern. Um, but, uh, you know, consensus here is, do we go back and take another look at this? Or, you know, what is the concept of rebranding and what does that actually mean to us? And how does that align with our council goals? I mean, are those, those are conversations, I'll be honest, we have not had. So, uh, again, if we're looking for new clip art, all of these look great to me. But if, uh, you know, we're actually talking about rebranding, I think that's a bigger conversation.
All right, thank you, Joe. Deidra?
Just kind of a follow-up to that. Um, have we gotten any specifically from our economic development partners? Um, with how these might be implemented and if they have any feedback at all?
Uh, we have, uh, shared, uh, the various designs, but first we wanted to get the community feedback uh, and then, uh, reach out and work with our partners. I did talk with the superintendent yesterday, who told me that, uh, at the school district, who told me that he'd be watching with, uh, Uh, and then, uh, reach out and work with our partners. I did talk with the superintendent yesterday who told me that, uh, at the school district, who told me that he'd be watching with attention just because wanted to make sure that, uh, all of this is coordinated. But that's definitely, uh, a, a goal of the, the entire campaign. So yeah, all of our partners, uh, have been involved in, um, taking a look at the, the pieces that we've designed.
And if we are looking at this from an economic development standpoint, to me, the, the, the mountains is probably the best representation because it is the most fluid. Um, that being said, the fact that it looks like a declining bar graph, just like there's something in that just kills me. So maybe some tweaks there, but, um, quite honestly, I don't know, since we didn't include an option for the community to say, hard stop. I guess right now we're talking about community feedback versus the, you know, the purpose of this and where we're moving. So that's kind of.
So the, the basic, uh, what I hear, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, is that, uh, we should, uh, we should start, uh, with a, with a clean sheet. And, uh, try again and see what we come up with this time.
One more thing, I think, from Mr. Goodi Eras.
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, well, the heron one, you know, that's obviously a loser from the voting standpoint. I, I thought it was cool because it was aspirational, but I've only seen one blue heron here in my seven years that I've lived here. I like the trees and I like the mountain and trees, number one, but the tree's a little scrawny and the mountains don't represent our mountains. But the two-person saw, I thought that would be a really great T-shirt or sweatshirt, but I don't think it represented Shelton or our future. But it represented a really cool thing for our past or something we could sell on Forest Festival Day or something. But I don't think it, you know, represents where we want to be or where we want to go or how we want to brand ourselves in the future. So those, those are my comments on the three. And my fourth comment is I think we should rebrand and check out our strategy again and rethink it.
Eric?
Jeff, I'm sorry. Jeff, what is the cost to start over with, uh, again?
That I'm not sure. Uh, we will have to, uh, talk with our partners at J Ray to find out. It won't be as expensive as the initial, um, versions, just because they've already done a lot of the background research and all that. But I can definitely get, uh, get council a, um, you know, a high and a low, uh, of what, uh, what that would cost.
That'd be nice. And I, I do think that if we did start over or if we continue on with this, that we should have something in there that indicates what our history was. I guess we want to move forward into the future, but we still have a, we still have a past. And I think it's very important that we acknowledge either, either our lumber industry or oyster industry. Because, I mean, that's who we are. That's who we've been. And I don't see Sierra Pacific going anywhere or our oysters. Well, at least I hope not.
I like the focus on clean water. We've been talking about that for a while. You know, that's why, and be honest with you, that's why initially the blue heron was interesting to me. I know it's now, it's repetitive. I didn't realize it was repetitive with Belfair or the yacht club or whatever. You know, but, um, you know, it's a symbol of fishing. It's a symbol of, you know, you know, it had, it had a little bit more meaning to it, I think. And, and again, if we're looking at actually rebranding the city, um, or just, if we're just looking to update the logo, that's a different story to me. But, um, you know, I'm, I'm, uh, regardless of the cost, I think this is absolutely a necessity. I think we need to be thinking about this. Um, yeah, I'm not so, I'm not sure how much the economic development strategic plan or any of that really, how much weight that carries today, despite all of the changes that have occurred in the last five to seven years. But, um, you know, I think it's a good conversation about alignment with council's goals and the community effort behind that. And making sure that when we, we, I'm, and I'm assuming that, uh, I'm assuming that, uh, the consultant that designed this had that information. You know, so, you know, anyway, again, I'm not the creative mind. I'm going to say that about a thousand times. So anything that is beyond a stick figure is going to be impressive to me. Um, so, you know, again, I, I just think if, if we want to rebrand, we need to consider what rebranding means and think about that. And, uh, you know, the community input component or somebody brought up, you know, somebody from the community designing the logo. You know, again, I, I'm okay with, with that. But, uh, you know, I think these are those moments where, uh, we leave these, kind of have to leave this up to the professional, uh, you know, the, the professional firms that have worked in this particular area and have demo, demonstrable characteristics and, and work that proves that, you know, this is actually a good decision, you know, I, again, I, because I'm not the creative mind, I'm not a marketing person. I don't know what, what's going to work and what's not. I just know that consensus from the folks that I have talked to in the community is Shelton's logo and brand needs a facelift. And, uh, you know, that was one thing everybody did agree on is a new logo would be a nice thing and branding would be a good thing. The actual logo and all that other stuff was a different story, so.
Deidra?
I just wanted to share a comment today that I, um, was talking with someone who said, you know, I've been through two rebrands within my professional career and, um, spend the money on the front end because I, I gotta tell you, if you don't get it right the first time, we're gonna be putting a lot of money in fixing it later. And so I think it's important that we're having these conversations and, um, kind of taking our time to make sure we do get it right.
Great. Mr. Boat, I think you were next.
Yes, I, I would come back to kind of what Joe's saying about whether we're just, whether we're doing a full rebrand or just doing a new logo. Have, I guess we're not really talking about that. So I mean, I, I'm voting for a full rebrand. So instead of just a logo change, because that's what I thought we were going after. And it sounds like we're not all clear on that. Am I mistaken?
All right. Mr. Goodi Eras?
If we're doing just a logo, I think we should like make it a contest with, among the children in the school and say, hey, teachers, let's rebrand. Let's have a logo. We're going to get some awesome stuff from the kids, you know? Um, and it's going to increase our Shelton pride and, and who we are and think about what they think about what, who we are, you know? So, but if it's a total rebrand, then I think we could incorporate that. But if it's just a logo thing, man, put, let the kids have a shot at it. They're probably way better than us. They could probably make cry cuts right now and give us a thousand T-shirts, uh, you know? I'm just saying like, we have a lot of talent within the community and, um, I, I do appreciate the experts. But, um, if we're going to do like a Shelton thing, let's ask the kids. Thank you.
And then I, I was asking a question and, and maybe it wasn't understood. Um, are, are we not all on the same page? Are, are we doing a rebrand or are we doing a logo, just a logo change?
Is that a question for me?
I, I guess for everyone.
So we are doing a rebrand, uh, and part of that rebrand is, uh, basically where it starts is through the logo. What are we? And that's, uh, the, the information that we gave, uh, to our consultants was, um, this is a building block. Uh, it's an economic development tool. That's where it came out of, uh, where the idea came from. And, uh, rebranding it for economic development purposes. Uh, and they came up with seven, I believe, initial designs. But it, it basically, the design tells the story of what we are. And that's part of the reason why we did the community survey back in August, I think it was, or September. Give us the three words or phrases that you think most describe Shelton because it has to be authentic. And we took all those responses and I can't remember how many we got. I know it was over a hundred. Uh, and provided that to our design consultants. Along with field trips that, uh, that they made here individually without any input from us, just to take a look at what the community, uh, was all about. The seven designs that six or seven that they came up with, uh, were shared with council at the work session in October, I believe. And then it, it, if I, uh, were shared with council and it basically, you want the logo itself, uh, to tell the story about what you are, what you authentically are as a city. And that's what they attempted to distill with these designs. But like I said, if none of them work, um, we're happy to start over. It's, uh, Deputy Mayor was absolutely right. You know, something I heard, uh, all the time growing up is do it right or do it twice. And we want to do it right. And if none of these are right, we'll start again. That's not a problem.
Kathy McDowell?
Have we ever thought of incorporating a picture of a train? I mean, that's our, that's history. Shelton's history. The logging trains, the logging camps, whatever. And I don't know if that could happen. I have no idea how that would work, but that, the oysters don't represent Shelton's history.
Well, and, and that was part of the question too, is it representing Shelton's history or is it representing where we want to be?
That's right.
And that's where, yeah. And so that's exactly where I was going with this is, you know, it, again, if we're just updating the logo, sure. But, you know, where do we want to be? Um, and again, uh, these, these are discussions that we have not had as a collective. So, and, and if we have, it's been quite a while, um, and many folks have come and gone, right? So, um, you know, so in, in general, again, I think a led, a facilitated discussion would be helpful. And if we need to look at, you know, budgeting this in 2022, um, I would be more than, more than amenable to discussing how we, uh, make the funding available and, and seek other opt, there's or maybe other, um, other opportunities with, with dollars coming down through, you know, Fed, you know, Fed dollars here to help us with this. Saying, I don't know, but, um, you know, this is something that we may need, we may need some facilitation on, um, an actual rebranding and marketing campaign. Because again, the economic development strategic plan is several years old now. Many things have changed dynamically in the community since then. That's why I asked the question, how much weight does that carry? You know, when we make these decisions and, you know, I'm, I'm very interested in, in ensuring that our marketing strategies, um, look forward and not just backwards. You know, I think it's important for us to see what the future looks like in this community and, and market that appropriately. And, and again, I, I need, I need a, I need, you know, I need some facilitation with that because I'm not the creative person, so.
So what I just want to, uh, kind of try to sum up what we're, what we're talking about here. So the first one, uh, is the launch for our website. So the launch for our website can happen regardless. It's just something we wanted to dovetail together just to make it more seamless. But it's not an imperative that we have to do it that way. But, uh, council with all the new council members or with the two new council members, rather, we had discussed meeting in the first quarter of next year to relook at, uh, the strategic goals. And that might be an opportunity for, uh, to incorporate this particular discussion, uh, into that strategic, uh, goal-setting discussion in the first quarter, whether, and we haven't scheduled that yet. It'll probably be in late February or, uh, sometime in early March. But we can take a look at that. But if that's the, the desired direction of council, there's no reason why the two things don't have to, or no reason why the two things have to go together. We can separate those out and I don't think it will be, you know, I, it shouldn't be much of a problem. And that's, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, Eric?
I, we put this out to the public for a reason. So I would, I would, uh, suggest that we put it back out to the public with the none of the above and let them decide at that point, because we already have three logos. We've already had the public's input on it. Let's go back out and see who doesn't like any of them. Otherwise, why do we put it out to the public to begin with?
Well, and we can do that, uh, with the next iteration, um, of the three or five or however many there are. The next time, the only thing I would caution is you get yourself in an endless loop where you get a majority of the people, uh, or, you know, even a significant minority of the people don't like any of them continuously. So that's the danger there. But, uh, you know, we can, we can certainly do it.
Well, Deidra was interested in finding out who didn't like them. So I'm saying we put the same one back out and find out if we're going to have a 55% don't like any of them. Or maybe it's 3%.
And part of the reason I ask that, Eric, is that at the study session on October 26th, our major of success that we stated there was 85% positive feedback. Well, if we aren't allowing people to provide negative feedback, how do we gauge if, if we've hit that number? So again, that's not necessarily right or wrong, but what is the expectation going into this process and how are we working through it?
Kathy McDowell?
Yeah, um, I like the conversation and I, and I do agree that may, may need to go back out to the public, but I have one question for Joe. Are you creative, Joe?
Is that a joke, Kathy?
No, I'm just asking.
Kathy McJoe.
Uh, no.
But I, I just wanted to lighten the spirit a little bit here.
Hey, that is not, Mr. Mayor, she is out of order.
I, yeah, 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 right.
I need your crying rag.
Throw in the towel.
But a good idea that, I think it's a good idea to put it back out to the public and see who didn't like it. Any of them.
That's kind of what I hear the majority saying tonight. Take a, take another look at it and see what we get.
Sounds good. Thank you all. I hope you, I hope you have a, a great, uh, great Christmas, great holidays. And, uh, we'll see, uh, most of you on January 4th.
Thank you, Mary, for the work on this.
I'd like to sign off to everybody and say thank you for everything you've done for me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for everything.
You know where you can find me. You know where you can find me unless I'm not there.
Where, Island Road, not that one.
All right. Thank you now.
Merry Christmas, everyone.